We have all members, all members present, start off with a roll call. Jim Ryan.
Here.
Kayla Anderson.
Here.
Jeremy Kennedy.
Here.
Bob Jash. Sorry, Teresa Bior instead.
Here.
Rachel Schoenfelder.
Yes.
Jen Tiff.
Yes.
And Ryan Reesker is present. Let's start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance unified by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have one recommendation for adding to the agenda, and I'd like to sort of as the first item here, we've got Lisa Ryder who is joining us remotely, and I'd like her to give us a finance update. So if we could add this finance update, I'll call up 1A if you will.
What can you add to the agenda here?
I don't feel so firm on it. Do we need to?
Do we have to do it? If you're gonna approve the agenda, I just would recommend that we do it after this, then it kind of settles back.
Okay, I would second that.
All right, motion by Jeremy Kennedy, second, and Teresa Bior instead. Of any discussions? All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so from here on out now, we will not have any motions or anything that are related to this, but that will all be taken care of at regular business. So Lisa Ryder is joining us remotely today, and she's got, so Lisa, are you available there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yes, we can.
Is my volume okay, or is there something that needs to be done?
Oh, you're pretty good, Lisa.
Okay, I would like to share a file then, and we'll start with a finance update on the current year. So, let's see. I think it should be this one. There it is. You have seen this format in the past before. You should be able to, a summary of the November 2023, 2024, and 2025 revenues and expenditures for the general fund, the food service fund, and the community service fund. Is everyone able to see that? Okay, so as you look across, what this is showing you the actual amounts. I have hidden the columns that are the budget because it's a lot of width to the documentation. So you're seeing the actual four dollars, and you're seeing the percent of that budget that is actually either received for revenues or expended expenditures as of the month of November in each of these three years. As you look across, the percentages for general revenues that have been received are fairly similar. It's a little bit down on the revenues for '25 simply because we haven't yet posted the levy receipts. On the general fund expenditures, they're pretty similar, ranging from 29.16% up to the 33%. When you look at food service, there is a significant increase in the revenues recognized at this time of year in '25 compared to the previous two years. And that has entirely to do with timing of when things were recorded. In the past, they were delayed for, you know, to speed on this on a monthly basis with rather doing that work. The food service expenditures are also showing a great expenditure there. Just pretty organized in getting those expenditures to us with a new. And so, again, you're seeing about a 10% increase in the expenditures we've recorded by the point in time in '25 compared to the previous two years. Not to say we have more expenditures, although we do, we are serving more kids. So there is that, too. Community education, you're gonna see that that's a little bit declined on the revenue side. Again, also because of the levy dollars not being recorded in '25, whereas in '23, '24, they may have been recorded. I purposely have asked for her to only keep the levy dollars in Fund One until I make the adjustment at the end of the year. On the expenditure side, you're seeing a pretty stable expenditure percentage of the three years with 45.52% of those categories expenditures of budget already recorded in December. As you scroll down on this sheet, you will see that there is also December recorded as well, and similar explanations to these percentages across the board. Pretty stable. Consistent, I should say. Any questions on this particular sheet?
Yeah, I have a question. What's, so what, yeah, this is Jeremy's, another question. What's the basis for the doubling then for both November and December? You said it was due to timing. What does that mean though?
I'm just reporting November, and then I'm also reporting December, just so that you have those two months. Previously, we had recorded July and August, September and October. It just, I mean, as you can see by looking at November and December, they don't change from month to month. So I'm just getting up to speed on where we're at with, through the December financials at this point in time. Does that answer your question, Jeremy?
No. I'm looking at like the '24 and the '23 data for November, and you're about to double that for 2025. And can you explain again why one is so much higher than the other?
Okay, which line are you on?
For the food service revenues?
Oh, food service revenues, yeah, absolutely. That's due to the, all free meals now. So we do not have near the funds coming in from parents as we used to, right? Now it's all being funded by state aid primarily, and then some federal. And so those dollars are a little bit more quickly received by us than they have been in the past. We're serving more kids because of the free meals. So all of those are reasons why.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is Jim. Since we're in the, I'm going into December here. 2012, 31, 25, we can't. I'm just curious about that. 12, 31, 25, that's an estimate, not an actual?
Oh, sorry, I spelled it wrong, I see that, but.
Are we in the 2025 now, like February? Okay, the other question is.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Since we're six months of our budget, are they normally percentage-wise this low compared to being through 50% of our budget year?
You're talking general?
I'm talking generally, yes. I'm just curious.
So, as you know, 10% of our aid is. 10% of our aid is held after June 30th. So 90% is gonna be received by the time we get to June 30th. So then, as you take a look at the aids, oftentimes, the state is withholding. There's a metering system that they have, and the greater percentages of those revenues come through after they have the final data from the previous year. They are now just running a lot of the aid calculations. For example, for state special education aid, they just reran those numbers now that everybody's audits were completed by the end of December. So you're gonna see that that's gonna start picking up now as far as being received in. But also, a big chunk of that is your lev dollars that are received then in May and June as well. So you get a good chunk of those funds that you don't get right away. We did receive some funds here in January for that, and that's what's not recorded on any of this. And even the November is a bit delayed in the allocation towards the community ed fund for levy.
So with that said, it sounds like the state or feds are six months or more out before we can even reconcile the ecretious year. So how did, how is it looking? How was our last fiscal year looking since they wait, they hold back 10% until after June 30th? Percentage-wise, how was our revenues and expenditures so far to 2024, to June 30th of 2024? You don't, you don't have that information?
Yeah.
To the next meeting, please.
So, okay, so the headers are off about a year, right? So these should all be fiscal year '23, fiscal year '24, and fiscal year '25, which for years should be '22, '23, and '24. My apologies for that.
Okay.
When taking a look at this report, we are complete in fiscal year '23, and we are complete in fiscal year '24. When we did the audited numbers, we made estimates as to what that final aid should be for each of the different aid categories, and we booked it, okay? So that's a receivable booked in that previous year, and it would be reflected if you were looking at year-end reports. When I run these reports, I am doing a multi-year guideline, and I am asking the system to give me the values that were in existence the previous two years for the fifth period as well as this year's. So you're being able to compare apples to apples across the board. And then for 20, or for December, it's through the sixth period. Does this make sense?
Not really, but that's okay. I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking back to the audit, too, when you said it on that. I realized our audit showed like a million to the good for 2024. So I'm fine with this, I just was curious if you had a, how we ended up percentage-wise for 2024? If you could get that information down the road on our general.
For year-end, you're talking.
Yeah, revenues and expenditures. Were we at 102 or 104, you know, instead of 98?
Got it.
Something like that. Okay, don't worry.
I can add that to the schedule for the future.
Yeah, I would have just, I would have asked if I knew this. I apologize if this was in the board's book later. I didn't pick up on it. So I would normally would contact you earlier to get that information or question.
No, this is.
Thank you.
This is available to you just now, Ben.
Okay.
Any other questions on this one? Bob, did you want me to go on to the other three documents?
Yes, so on here, which one are you gonna go through first? I have.
Next, I thought I would cover the current year revised budget. Would that be okay? Okay, so we are halfway through our current year, and it's time usually after the audit has been presented that you give information about a revised budget. Today is the workshop, it's not intended you're taking action on this. But what I am doing is laying out for you on those single page. It is a full page of numbers with each of the funds listed off to the left. And then you have a column for the sum of your adopted budget, ADP '25. And you have the sum of the revised budget that I am proposing the board take action on at the next board meeting to approve. The difference is in the last column that shows any increase or decrease when you compare the adopted budget and the revised budget. So for the general fund, you'll see I have two different fund balances in each column. The first fund balance, we knew at the time when we adopted the budget for fiscal year '25, that was pre-audit of $24, right? So at that point in time, our projected fund balance was $7,471. We had revenues of $39.3 mil. We had expenditures of $39.4, and we are in the adopted budget planning to spend down $125,000. The projected ending balance, if we were looking at the adopted budget, of 7.3 mil. However, since we did the adopted budget and you approved that in June, we have had the audit completed. The audit showed an increase to our balance of just over $1 million in total. And I'm not talking unassigned, I'm talking total fund balance. That total fund balance for the general fund then is our beginning point for our starting fund balance for the revised budget. From there, the revenue you see is similar, but increased by $379,345, which is reflective of your federal grants that needed to be trued up for the current fiscal year. In addition, are some other revenues and expenditures, like if you recall, the board accepted a donation of $120,000 for funds to be kept track of in a Fund 60 for our sports and athletics. That's added into revenue and in the expenditures as well, with budgets that equal each other. So that's included as well. The other thing I would note is that our revenue calculation for revised current year, internally, that line item has shifted. We lost gen ed students of about 79 students, ADMs. That reduces our gen ed money. However, we know now after they recolled our state special ed aid that we are anticipating that number's going to jump up for us and offset the amount that we were otherwise seeing declining in the gen ed money. So the good news is, we knew we were gonna lose that money because we saw those numbers for enrollment going down more than we expected, particularly in kindergarten for this fall. However, the special education aid offset that decline. So our revenue is pretty stable in what we had adopted budget compared to what we're showing in our revised budget. The expenditures are also increasing for those same federal grants and the addition of that Fund 60, 60, that we added for the athletics. Are there questions on the general fund revised budget? Now that I've explained the general. Go ahead.
Let me, hearing anything about federal grants and that being put on hold since somebody in Washington has decided he's gonna take away some of this stuff?
We heard that initially.
We haven't made any assumptions in like that.
Heard anything from the state at all?
No, and this is for the current year. Next year is where the question marks probably are.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
So we're talking about Fund One, or which one of these are we talking about specifically?
The top three, few lines, we start with the Fund One. That's the general fund. We have a few funds that crosswalk to it because we keep track of them separately, but they still, for the state purposes, they see it all as general fund, like student activity accounts. So that's a culmination of those funds altogether then in Fund One. Fund Two is your food service. That's the next set of numbers. Yes, go ahead.
How can an increase in special ed funding cause the general fund to go up if those funds are, are those funds dedicated funds?
Well, so they're, so they're, the revenue that you end up receiving was always based on last year's expenditures. Right, so that's where that ends up. So they're coming up with the calculations, and special ed is in Fund One.
Okay. Thank you.
And that is where the legislature also put money toward the cross subsidy, the dollars that previously we weren't seeing any revenue for, and they're trying to close that gap as to how much we're having to cover, which is general dollars. So that's part of the reason why we're seeing an increase as well statewide.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions on the general fund? Okay, so the rest of the funds are listed below. I'm just gonna kind of, the format's the same, so I won't spend as much time talking about the columns all mean. But Fund Two is food service. And when Jess and I looked at her budget, we did see that we had some room for some revenue increase there, and we did reduce some of the expenditure lines that she wasn't utilizing. So therefore, there is an improvement upon the amount of fund balance that would be used given the revised budget, an improvement of about $43,500. There is a fund balance there projected at the end of the revised budget that we're proposing of $648,659. So that is something that, at this point in time, the restriction for food service that you for '25 have to make sure that your fund balance is less than six months of your operating expenditures. And we're in, we're still in okay shape that way. We'll have to think about how we're gonna spend that down in the next coming year, probably, because we don't wanna have any money taken away should we get to that point. Any questions on food to, food service, Fund Two? Okay. Fund Four is community education, community services sometimes referred to. I spoke with Dawn, and you can see that we have a beginning fund balance that shifted as well from the start of the audit, an improvement of $153,000 in community ed last year. The revenue, she's keeping the same, and the expenditures, we are adjusting just slightly. The reality for community education is so much of what they do is based upon what they're offering, and there's a lot of moving parts. So that's one in which they just keep track of it internally, and they prefer not necessarily change too much mid-year and focus instead on just monitoring that budget throughout the year. Fund Seven, the only change that you see between the revised and the adopted budget is really the beginning fund balance. Fund Seven is where you set up your debt payments. Your revenues are, revenue you're collecting from levy to cover the payment for your principal and interest on the debt. And for debt service for us, once you set that at the beginning of the year, those principal and interest payments don't change on you. It's really just a matter of timing and getting that taken care of. So you won't find a lot of times that we're revising the Fund Seven debt service budget much at revision. Fund Eighteen, this is our custodial fund. This is where our scholarship funds go and our fiscal sponsorship, I should say it differently, our fiscal posting of the ELC, Environmental Learning Center. They bring in their own revenue, and they have their expenditures. We pay them for them, and we deposit and regul their revenues. We are basically a reporting mechanism for them. It's for many years, no change on any of the revenues or expenditure budgets there. Is a slight shift on the beginning fund balance, and that's it. Our internal service funds, those are our Fund Twenty and Fund Twenty-three. They are essentially the clinic that we have, and I should say, the clinic slash health services. So for the first six months of this fiscal year, July through December, we did have our Well at Work clinic in action. And now for the remaining six months, we have CAVERA. And those expenditures go into those internal service funds. Revenues go there as well, we keep track of it separately. And lastly is our Fund Forty-five. Fund Forty-five is trust fund. We have an irrevocable trust, which means that those funds are set aside for the other post-employment benefits. They initially were created or received by us when we sold bonds in 2009. Since then, those funds are kept track of in trust funds. We have the ability through state statute to invest in those funds in equity. And so we do have more interest possibilities when it comes to those funds. Those funds can only be used for other post-employment benefits as described in our contracted agreements with our employees. Here we have just a change in the beginning fund balance, no recommendation for revenue or expenditure budget changes there. Does that help explain the various funds that we have? And does that make sense to you? The dollars we're recommending in each of the revenues and expenditures for each of those funds as revisions for the current fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions? Bob, may I keep going?
Yes, so which, which sheet would you like to go to here next? So I've handed out the rest of these, I've just handed them out to people. So do you want the, do you want the assumptions shared first?
I think so.
Okay, so the assumption sheet looks like this, got a little MDE thing on the bottom. That's the, that's the sheet. So as we get into this, I will forewarn you that this is going to get everybody's attention as we go through this, and that is because these are initial assumptions that we plug in because we've gotta start with a budget somewhere, okay? So as Lisa went through, she, certain percentage to all categories, certain percentage that was assigned to wages, et cetera, as well as a number of students that we anticipate at this point. On this assumption sheet, if you look at the top left-hand side, those are all of our grades. So early childhood, so those are early childhood, special ed, those are the kids primarily at public, they have some special needs, and then kindergarten through 12th grade. And what you can see here is that our, at the bottom end, we've got about 150 kids coming in, and at the top end, we've got nearly 200. So obviously, that gives us a difference of 50 kids right off the top as we project with our enrollment. So this is our best estimate at this point. As a result, we're looking like we're down about 45 kids, 43 kids. Those numbers can change, obviously, but those are the assumptions that we are going under, okay? So that's the, that's what kind of sets the stage on this initial, all right? So Lisa, would you like to proceed with the remaining assumptions that we have? And then I got one more sheet that I'll share with them, I handed out.
Perfect. So when you have that enrollment figured out, I plug it into what we call a gen ed formula, what if? It's an actual spreadsheet MDE provides, and it's called a what if? You put your enrollments in for the current year as well as your projected enrollment for next year. And with that, it runs through all these calculations for how much aid then would it generate? When you talk about general education formula, the legislators talk about that often. And when they make legislative changes, and you hear them talk about a record 4% increase or 2% or 3%, that is only on the gen ed formula. That number is 7,463 if I assume a 2.5% increase from '25 to '26. It is not yet determined from MDE yet what that number will be. Last year, that basically said it will be no less than 2% and no more than 3%. And it will be dependent upon the calculation of CPI, Consumer Price Index, and we don't know that exact calculation yet. So I used an assumption of 2.5% on that formula. That formula is only 7,463 times your pupil units. If you look at that and say our enrollment did nothing different, and it was exactly as it was this year, next year. If that's the case, 2.5% increase on that formula, we would generate an additional $460,000. When we have enrollment that is declining, 43 kids, that 43 equivalent means $400,000 reduction. So our net increase right now is $60,000 only on our gen ed revenue. I will show you in the next page how much of that gen ed revenue is actually what we're talking about when we talk about the gen ed money, because it's, it's not all of your revenue. So when they say there's a 2% increase, you don't take 2% on all your revenue. It's only on the gen ed portion. So I'll show you that on the next sheet. The other thing I wanna talk about is the compensatory. They have had lots of conversations, and statute says that the compensatory moving forward will be calculated based upon only our direct certifications. These are people who have connected to the county and have signed up for the various different county assistance. They are not our families. They are not our families who might complete the educational application for benefit, the application for educational benefits. Those are no longer being considered in the calculation of the compensatory revenue. And for us, as you scroll down that page, you'll see that there is a printout there showing you compensatory of one million two fifty-five. That is a decline from our current number, which you see in the bottom image from M D E. Our current law shows one million six eleven, seven twenty-three point nine eight, twenty-five. For twenty-six, that current law changes to one million two fifty-five, four twelve. That's a significant decrease for us. There is discussion of the governor's proposal to hold harmless school districts, and if we were to see that happen based on how his proposal is written, the numbers that we would anticipate seeing that twenty-six would go back up to one million six hundred thousand, seven sixty-six. We don't know which way it's gonna go, not sure what's gonna happen with the statute, um, or the calculation from M D E, if the governor's proposal goes through as is, or if there's adjustments to it. So I would say right now, as I look at building the budget for twenty-six, I'm using the lower number of one million two fifty-five. But that's a three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar reduction.
Okay, so does everybody understand what that means there? So for compensatory aid, currently, we should get one point six million. Under the way laws written, there's gonna be winners, and there's gonna be losers on the compensatory aid across the state. So right now, she's using the lower assumption because that's the most, um, conservative, I guess, way of doing that. So, so it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than what we would have had. There is at least some hope that we will be held harmless, and that we won't end up losing three hundred and fifty thousand. But as we're starting initial budget conversations, we're being conservative, so that loss of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue is being included as we go through all this, okay?
It's our whole base value?
Uh, conversations that we've, uh, kind of here come a lot of legislatures, that's about the only thing that, so that's why we're including three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in lost revenue.
Is the one point two our base value?
Yes.
Is that minimum?
Yes.
The other thing I think about is, assuming that there's a two point five increase, we're already giving like three percent increases on our wages here to our groups, so that won't even, will be behind the ball even, do you know what I'm saying?
Well, don't worry, I'm gonna show you just how far behind the ball this is gonna look, so. Um, so as we did this, as, uh, Lisa and I have stated, we needed to start somewhere, and this is the absolute first blush of this, and when you see these numbers, your eyeballs are gonna get big. Um, I would encourage everybody not to panic at this stage here, because there's a lot of work that has to be done. But all this is, is Lisa took the numbers, plugged them into the existing spreadsheets that we have, and this is what comes out.
Okay, so Bob, are we seeing the right thing on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm assuming the revised budget that I proposed, and that we walked through just a minute ago, would be approved by the board. Should that be the case, that's my beginning point for beginning our assumptions for next year. When it comes to revenue, the levy you've already set, that was done when we did that this last December for pay twenty-five, that is already in the, in, in the play, in play. For the general fund alone, and that's all this sheet is talking about, it's just the general fund. The general fund has current levy of eight point eight million, that number is eight point three million next year. The state aid gen ed, when we do the what-if calculations, there's a few other aids included, but, um, that in the current year is twenty-one point two million, and that with the projection of the enrollment that we talked about just a little bit ago, that number is now twenty million three sixty-eight. Your state categorical aid, these are gonna be other things like grants and things of that nature that we get, that are not part of the gen ed what-if. There's about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar decline there, two hundred and sixty thousand dollar decline, mostly because that's where your, um, they have this read act money, and at this point in time, my assumption is that that might be a one-time year amount of a hundred and sixty thousand that we're getting right now, that we won't see next year. And then the other assumption is another hundred thousand dollars cumulative in some other smaller type aids that have previously been available. When you look at this special education aid, I am showing an increase there for twenty-six, and that is based off from the calculations, it's two-part reasons. One is, our expenditures have increased in twenty-four, which in, is used for the twenty-five calc. So the assumption is that we're gonna maintain that effort and still spend the equivalent in twenty-five as we did before, and that should still generate then revenue for twenty-six, what would look like the six point eight mil. Our federal aid is taking a decline because in twenty-five, we have a few things. A couple extra federal funds that were just being wrapped up in the first three months of the year, that will no longer carry forward, because they were ester money. So they are definitely done. And on the federal titles, I made the assumption of no carryover, and only ninety percent of the original allocation we got for twenty-five. That's really conservative, and it's something we have to look at a little more closely, but that is the recommendation provided by M D E in this seminar I heard last Friday, if you wanna be conservative. Our local revenue is just a slight bit down, um, for reasons that, um, as I went through kind of on a line item basis, there were just some of those that I wasn't seeing as meeting, so I thought it best that we reduce those revenues. Um, the total revenues, loss of revenue from twenty-five revised budget to twenty-six adopted would look like almost a one point three million dollars.
Okay, let's hold up there for a second. So on that, again, these are all projections that we're not exactly sure on. Um, certainly some variability that is there, and when we do this, on this initial budget, we are absolutely as conservative on the revenue as we can. So with the revenue that we are projecting here, if everything holds, I would expect that this is a worst-case scenario, it should end up being better than that. But better to shock and awe, I guess, at this point, and be able to dial it back as we go. So this is where we expect right at the moment, okay? Okay, Lisa?
On the expenditures, I did not get into the number of staff we currently have compared to the number of staff we would expect to have with a certain set of class size. That's a little premature, okay? All I did here is I took our current expenditures you see in the revised twenty-five column, and inflated them for the amount of percentage that is typical in our assumptions for salaries and benefits, for contracted services, which include our subs, for supplies and materials, for equipment, and for dues and membership. Some people have referred to this in my past experience with boards as taking a big, high wage, and just, you know, going across the board and assuming not much, um, I wasn't being very fine about things, rather just very broadly applying those percentages in these large groups. With those percentage increases, which are very typical, and yet to the point of the board member that just spoke to the fact that we're actually increasing wages higher than what our revenue increases projected at, um, those dollars then increase on the expenditure side by one point seven million. So when you combine the loss of revenue and the increase on the expenditures, we're looking at in first blush, three million dollar deficit.
So with that, Lisa, um, what percentages did you apply to the overall expenditures to arrive at these numbers?
Roughly three percent, however, for transportation, I used the contracted approved amount of nine percent. And when it came to salaries and benefits, um, we've had some increases in our, you have different contracts that call for steps and lanes that end up costing more than a straight percentage on the sales. And then you have other contracts that don't, so there's a mixture there in what that looks like.
How, I know this is gonna start the whole budget discussion, and, uh, last year, we found out that a number of kindergartners didn't come here, they went somewhere else. But we did not lower our staff, because it was too late or whatever in the year. When do we know when our enrollment numbers are more set, and will they affect any staffing once we find that out earlier than later? So these are always our best guesses at this stage, and that's, again, this is where we start the initial discussion. So now, um, the next couple of weeks, Lisa and I, just start going through this, making sure, see what we can do about tightening up things with our revenues, but then also looking at our expenditures, and go from there. So again, this, we gotta start somewhere, and this was the, um, typically, we don't end up liking just, okay, we're gonna apply three percent to our entire budget for our expenditures, but, that's where we begin.
And Lisa, do you remember, um, when are we set to renegotiate or have started having conversations on transportation? I was thinking of that today. It's gotta be coming soon.
Yeah, twenty-six is our last year that we have in agreement with our current contractor, and we must go out for R F P. And speaking with, um, CISO, who assists us with that process of an R F P, they recommend that we actually, um, have our R F P ready to go by August, so that it can be responded by potential carriers in October, once they get past their busy September. That's the recommendation on that timing.
Can we maybe restart our ad hoc committee to start chatting about that and brainstorming about some ideas associated with that?
How many year contract was that, three year?
It was two, and it was the only two because you can't go longer than ten without, that will be our tenth year in twenty-six with them, and we must do an R F P now, per statute.
We didn't go out for R F Ps two years ago, now we have to.
And that was, was it nine percent year over year, or was it just a one-time nine percent increase on that year?
Nine percent, next year over this year. Yeah, this year was big.
This year was big.
The first eight years were like two percent increases each year, sometimes three, but then this last year was sixteen and a half percent increase, and next year is nine percent.
And already, roughly seven percent of our general fund is spent on transportation.
I think it deserves a conversation, even bigger than just R F Ps, um, to be honest.
Are they saying that's fuel surcharge, finding, finding drivers, or?
All of it.
All of them off.
I was on that committee round, yeah.
Yeah, Lisa did. And we were told when we, by Lisa, was it CISO? Or was it said that the increase, we would be better off taking this company for two years, the increase would probably be less?
We'd get a great deal.
Great deal, and then did not happen.
And then it was too late to go.
To go out for another company.
Yeah, they held out quite a while before they gave us their, their, um, numbers, which was unfortunate.
Is there anything providing us for some of those R F Ps earlier?
Well, we're on the contract for next year.
True.
So.
Yep. But like, I just think there's different ways we have to discuss and reimagine transportation outside of just getting bids, because it's very possible we wanna get bids, it's very possible.
Right.
So when do we have our contracts signed then?
August.
August.
Well, we've all, we've all got our contracts signed for next year, for F Y, for F Y twenty-six. It's just that we've gotta have our request proposals ready in August, so that way by October thereabouts, we can, it gives us some time.
If we were going to be using a different carrier than who we currently have, the new carrier would have to buy buses and find a place to be their, their garage, all of those things. So there, it's gonna take a lot of lead time for somebody new coming in. Or existing, it may not take as much timewise, but the question is, will we get bids?
So, anyway, big scary negative at this point. Uh, Lisa and I will be working on this pretty heavily the next couple of weeks to see if we can, uh, bring that number a little bit more in line, but those are some of the initial assumptions that we, we gotta start somewhere, and those are the assumptions that we began with. Taking a bit back of what Jeremy said, is there any, any, uh, interest in looking at an R F P in March or April this year for twenty twenty-seven? Then we'll have some better numbers for our twenty twenty-six. Oh, the twenty twenty-seven, yeah, nevermind, that, twenty twenty-six is already set, so.
Yeah.
So we'll get those numbers, okay. I was, uh, thinking, I said one thing, I was thinking different, so, yes, we can.
But to your point, it doesn't hurt to start early, 'cause someone, I think Lisa said it too, that there's some lead time associated that we're gonna look at someone who could get a shop, get buses.
I don't, normally you don't get anybody there. Remember the Lee line?
Yeah, they were there for a time.
And now the student, first student bottom seat, I mean, Bob is absolutely right, you know? Whoever comes in has gotta have a, gotta find buses, or get out another contract and move their buses here, then find drivers, a place to store them, learn the, learn routes, so that's, so somebody else to step in is very unusual, but it, did it happen? Absolutely. So.
I have to spend money to save money.
So, we won't, we will see, but anyway, that's where, that's where this ended up being, so. I know that ended up being a little bit, uh, lengthy there in order to understand that, but let me say, we gotta start somewhere.
It's like a buzzkill, it's starting.
I know, but I thought it was a little awful.
A lot more fresh.
I figured that'd be great to set up things for school board compensation, which is in that list. So, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yep.
So the, the next item that you have on your list there, it's on page four there. Uh, so those are the current numbers for school board compensation, what that looks like. Uh, it's my understanding that last year, because there was some, uh, because of the budget cuts, the board had decided at that point to leave their, um, leaving kind of as they were, be decided. So at this point, you can see the twenty twenty-four values there. So, um, it's really up to the board to kind of kick it around, what you guys would like to do up. This is something that should get decided, I feel, this month.
Well, prior to this bleak financial picture, I was going to advocate for the vice chair to be paid the same amount as the clerk, because there are a significant number of extra meetings for that person. But now I feel bad saying it.
Well, the reason, the reason we had this discussion back, when we first got on the board back, I got on here, was it eight, six years ago, whatever, my first meeting, we had to decide our compensation. It just didn't feel right for new board members to come in and decide, hey, one of the first motions that they make during the organizational meeting. So we then pushed it out to like July, where we had an idea, you know, summertime, something like that. And we decided for a while there to, it was pretty low, and two, two factors were, it was low, trying to keep, you know, because of budgets. So we decided at that time, if you really wanna attract people that are interested in serving on a school board, you should make it at least. you should make it at least something where somebody isn't falling behind. If they're taking off work, or finding daycare, or finding people to help their children, or do this or that, finding different things. First, they should stay time off, away from stuff, to serve on a board. So we decided then to just start, every year a couple hundred dollars went up. And that lasted for, I don't know, four years or something, and asked to revisit it. So the point was, it's, you know, for, as I tell people, whether it's true or not, I make about 50 cents an hour doing this job, all the work you're doing. And I'm not complaining, but if you really wanna get people to step up and serve on these boards, they have to be, they can't take a step back. And if they're taking a step back, that's the first thing they're gonna say is, no way, no way. And not that a board is, this board is fit for everyone, but some people may do it if they work second shift, or they work nights, or whatever.
Have kids to take care of.
Single, single parent, you know, all those things come into play. So, I mean, the schools, the school compensation around the state and the region is possible. You know, the bigger ones have more money, the littler ones have like a one-time fee a year. So we can do whatever we want here. I'm not advocating either way, I'm just telling you kind of the history of where we are today.
I think there should be some yearly increase, just like all the staff that we employ here get, somewhere usually between 0 and 3%. That would be probably my only feedback. And I agree with Therese that the vice chair really has to attend a lot of meetings.
And then negotiations. If you look at that, if you're working and you're taking off work.
I spent more time in negotiation meetings than I did at work for like a month and a half. It's pretty intense. But $30 a meeting, sometimes a meeting is three, four hours. A month can be $30, so... That would be something to really consider. Well, I think the, don't the teachers, when they attend meetings, get $50 a meeting?
No, well, you're...
Your union rep?
Yeah, you're not considering the hours, you're making about 50 cents an hour. But there, you're, you're not compensated, it's just like being a board member, you're not compensated for each meeting. You're, it's like being an officer and you get compensated so much for that. When I was negotiation secretary, of course, this was, you know, before electricity was invented and dinosaurs were on the earth, but I got like $1,800 to be a negotiation secretary. And that was a lot of meetings and then all the notes and records that I had to maintain. So you weren't really getting a ton of money to do that. And that was paid for by your union dues, I wanna put that out there too, at the school districts.
I think we had talked about increasing it though, when Martino was here. We had to talk about increasing $50 a meeting, and it just never got put on the agenda as a motion, but I think that's what we had talked about.
So outside of those changes of the VNA, so what I'm hearing is that perhaps the clerk and the vice chair end up paying an equivalent amount, whatever that ends up being, $50 per meeting for negotiations. Are there any other recommendations then that would be applied to the pay formula?
Somebody mentioned raising, I don't know, did you mention? That's the only thing.
What'd you say?
I don't know. I can't remember what she said. It's gonna have to be that word, "board," "position," word. You were talking about raising our negotiations.
Well, and I feel like I...
I thought we should raise the negotiations. Like I said, we had talked about $50 a meeting. And then in terms of just the pay overall, I think we should do like a percent increase. I think it should, it should be increased, just like everyone else is paid, it's increased.
So if you took 3%, you're talking roughly 150 bucks.
Yeah.
For seller. These have risen 22, 23, 24 at 200. So if you're putting, I mean, your other option is, is you can kind of continue that pattern and have it increased by 200 dollars. This is gonna be a topic, but I think we should keep it the same, other than clerk and vice chair for a year until we can see where this budget goes. I know it's, I know it's, it's not a meaningful amount as far as the everything goes, but it is.
Honestly, it's always getting paid at all. I'll just be honest.
Yeah, do that.
I'm okay with leaving, and I think that's a good idea for this year. I do think we should think about it for the following year with, to Jim's point of attracting people to run. And I think we should, once again, look at where we are compared to other school districts. And maybe at that time, we should increase it.
That's a good, great idea, I think. Look around a little bit, see what else, see what comparable districts are doing.
Okay, I can collect that information. So at this point, if you were to, just take those into consideration, there'll be a formal motion at the next board meeting to set those.
How do you feel about, people feel about increasing the vice chair to the same as the clerk?
I think that's a good idea.
I think that's a good idea.
The vice chair has more responsibility in the last few years than previously.
Okay, so... That was, that. Next item, this is right here. Oh, the teacher seniority list. So the teacher seniority list, that, there's one, there's a seniority list that gets generated every year. Basically, you take the people who are the most senior, all the way down to the people who are the most recent hires. That way, we end up getting into some kind of budgetary issues. It's within our union contracts, the last in would be the first that would end up being helped if that ended up coming to that. So the, that list is generated by HR. Then they get handed off to the teachers, they look through it, and they go, oh, wait a minute, I, that's not quite right. They, I'm gonna make sure, we verify, fix those items, that gets approved. Once that list is approved, that is the official list. So then somebody can't come in later and say, oh, wait a minute, that's not right. So that's all that is.
We don't provide that list to us over the next year.
Yes, yep. So it'll be presented to the board. The resolution of non-concurrents. So Keenan is here to kind of give us a little bit of background information on this. So... So Keenan, on this, you don't need to necessarily go through the entire, entire piece. Just maybe provide a little background on the resolution.
Yep, so background on the, on the whole process. It is in state statute that each school district with at least 10 American Indian students have an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Districts, charter schools, cooperatives, and travel controlled schools are required to submit annual compliance documents to the Office of American Indian Education by March 1st of each year. Also known as the vote of concurrence or non-concurrents, annual compliance is a valuable opportunity for AIPAC members to meet and discuss whether or not they concur with the educational offerings that have been extended by the district to American Indian students. So there is a discussion that I've been having with the Parent Advisory Committee over the last couple of weeks. They are issuing a vote of non-concurrents. There's paperwork involved due to the state. So at the meeting at the end of the month, myself, Jasmine, the chairperson, Bob, and Ryan will all have to meet and sign off on some paperwork together because all of that information is due back to the state at the end of that week. The, the parent committee will also present what they call, what are called resolutions to start making progress towards vote of concurrence. Basically just saying that we agree that the needs of American Indian students are being met or start working towards that. And that can be anything from providing intervention services for students, looking at data. We've had, we've had a long, a long battle in our history in American Indian education. So this is just another way to have a conversation with people. It's not always the easiest conversation to have, but it does need to happen, so. I have the packet here, I also have the previous resolutions from last year. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have too, because we are, we are learning together, so.
Okay, so on that, I would recommend that we don't go into the full detail of it. If you do have any questions at this stage, it means a valuable resource for us.
Will we go into the details at the next meeting?
Yep.
Yes, yep. Yep, I'm, I'm working with Jasmine to put together their list and their presentation. And then she'll be making that presentation here at that meeting to you all. And then we'll have a discussion afterwards to sign everything. And then the board has 60 days to respond in writing to those resolutions.
Is last year's comments by the school district included in those?
It can be. We've had that discussion in Hastings too. So I'm the chairperson for our parent committee in Hastings, so. Yeah, it is basically a review of what's been done in the last 12 months as well as what we wanna see in the next 12 months.
Can I offer a question when we respond? Having been on AIPAC for the last couple of years, I know that we have to fill out a form with, and it's, you know, resolve this, resolve that. But I'm wondering, because that's a box we have to check, we have to fill it out a certain way. But I would also wonder if we couldn't like write a letter or something more personal to be included with that? Because we do have a relationship with these families, and we're trying to build a relationship with these families, these families. And I think that some of getting that, no, I know. Getting that just very clinical, formal paperback and nothing else doesn't feel good. It does, it's not, it doesn't feel humane. And so I would like to see us, and I'd be happy to help create something if that's appropriate. I'm willing to do that, but I would like to be able to, to help.
So we've got 60 days in order to do that.
Yeah.
So then do a rough draft, make sure the board can see that, that that letter would get approved by the entire board prior to...
Yeah. And that we could, yeah, but, but again, I recognize we have to do the formal thing, but I'd like to add a personal response.
As a form of relationship building?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions there? Anything?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, the next item that's on the list are the policy reviews. So on that, there's a number of them that are there. And on those, there's one, if you look at that sheet that I handed off to you, that's kind of, that says superintendent comments on it. There's a number of policies there, but one that kind of stands out is Policy 522. Policy 522 is Title IX. And that Title IX piece there, what ended up happening was there was a final determination at the federal level. And as a result, the recommendation from the School Board Association is that we revert back to the 2020 version of Title IX because of what that final ruling was. So the rest of them are all just kind of the normal, you know, little updates here and there. But I've never, that's the first time I've seen a policy where there was that change as a result, and they're back, as a result of that. You said before, yeah, it's all changed.
I was just wondering, is this your recommendation to go back to follow as being, is it something we have to do?
Uh, yes, because of the way the ruling, because of the way the, basically, there's a ruling on what the interpretation of law, so then they do have to make that, you have to make that change. A little bit different, I've never seen that either. Any further questions on those? Okay, cultural liaison for BSUs from Black Student Union. So the, we look at our, so kind of complicated here because we've got clubs that happen during the day. Okay, so then you've got, so there's a lot of those clubs. Those are teachers that are assigned duties there. Essentially, they have kids that they're supervising. Roman, could you pull a little more flesh on the one for that?
Well, for that...
Advisory time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Completely do this. So our advisory times are teachers who are interested or have a specific club that they want to run. They put that out there, students sign up for those clubs, it's our enrichment time. And so students get to pick what they wanna do. And if they don't have a club, then they just have an additional supervised study hall to get some extra work time in.
Majority of students are...
The majority of the students are in our, oh yeah, we have more participation this year than I think I've seen in maybe since I've started, honestly, in here in the district. So it's really a good, a good thing that we've started to do it. And the way that it's being run this year is different than anything else we've ever had. And so it gets kids more excited, it gets them more engaged in these enrichment activities. And so they're able to actually see progress in what they're doing in things that are moving forward for themselves with, with our clubs too.
So with that, so they, we currently, our situation with ESU is that we have an individual who volunteers from outside of, they're not employed, but they just volunteers this time to come in and work with our students at ESU. So the question then becomes, should there be a compensated position for that? Should there be compensation for that individual, okay, as he comes in? So the, it's always, it's really never anything just about the one piece that you're talking about, but it ends up becoming, what precedent do you end up setting? So if we have somebody else that comes in for another club, what does that end up looking like? So that's a little bit of the background, but beyond that.
I, um, I think for this, we also need to look at the teacher contract. Look at what organizations, which advisors are on the ECU paid. And if the job that he is doing as the advisor to ESU is similar to some of those other jobs where they are getting stipend. Because I know he does a lot more than come in on Wednesdays, that's enough, but he does a lot more than that. They do a lot of things, he's been leading, he's organizing. So I just think it's necessary.
So I asked, I asked our activities director, Paul Hartman, to start the outline and that information because that, we're not very into, let's look and see, see where that ends up.
They're like, define the role, clearly.
Yeah.
When we were starting.
Well, it is a little haphazard though, like what advisors and what clubs are paid, and how much they're paid, like when you look at the list, it's not very clear in the upper season of all. Like when I was in negotiations, I was trying to figure that out and like make it, I wanted to pull it out of negotiations and give it to the district, to the board to set like advisors and their pays and that because it doesn't make any sense to me.
It depends who gets paid, who doesn't, a lot on what is like a state sanctioned club or not. Like a lot of our clubs are taking like our sustainability club right now. That's just one that, that is near and dear to that advisor's heart. And so that's what she started doing, right? There's not like a national sustainability club, that's just something that they do. You know, some of our other clubs, we've had, I mean, we have a, we have someone that has a chess club, right? That's what he does, he has chess, he's teaching kids how to do chess. And that don't... And that don't, you know, but I'm just saying, as part of who gets paid and who doesn't, it also depends on how the club is. Like we have a lot of our own clubs that our kids are interested in or that our teacher, or, you know, kids have come to our teacher and said, we think you'd be good at this, would you help us do this, right? And that's how those get started. And that's why that's part of the enrichment part and not a competitive club kind of thing.
Hopefully with Ms. Rahm, we can at least have a little bit of a sketch on at least a potential amount if we're decided to make a paid position and be able to. What, go ahead. ESU had a conference, was it the last week, Wednesday? I think Austin was one of them.
Minneapolis and Winona, I was gonna say, Minneapolis, Mankato?
No, I'm pretty sure it was Fairborn or another one.
Minneapolis came, I know someone from Minneapolis came.
Were those, it may be a different district altogether, but were those paid advisors that traveled with them? So what I asked for was kind of the ones that are close here. So Winona is actually pretty close to us in school district size and whatever. So that's the one I wanted to ask for Hastings. At least, I figured I did some checking for me and those districts, they are not as strong as you. Or as in Fairborn, I don't know.
I don't know.
Have you had a conversation with the young gentleman that does volunteer now about this?
No.
That might be, that might be a good thing too, to see what his interest is and what he intends and expects.
Right, and Trey is doing a really nice job, and I said it's great that he's doing that. What we have to make sure that we do is that when we're figuring this out and we're not creating something for the individual, but more for the position, right? Because people change.
Can I, I, I thought this discussion was going to be more about a cultural liaison rather than an advisor to ESU. So I, I just wanted to bring that up because those are two different things.
So, I mean.
Well, it just, in our district right now, we have a Hispanic cultural liaison. We have multiple Native American liaisons that are doing a fantastic job. And so as we're looking at the opportunity gap that we see in student success rates according to the testing that we're currently doing, our non-white, lower income students are not doing as well as white middle and super. So one of the things that they possibly help is to have more support for students likely have from Hispanic students and Native Americans. So I guess I was just wondering, and this may not be the time for this conversation, but you know, is it possible to consider having a cultural liaison for our Black African American, possibly combined with mixed-race students? I know the numbers are similar, we combine those two categories to the numbers of our Native American students and Hispanic students. You know, I don't know, some of our feedback that we've gotten over the last couple of years from families is that they're not feeling as supported. Our administrators, our teachers, they do a wonderful job, but it's, you know, there's, there's a lot of trauma from racism that made it difficult for people to trust and all white staff. And so if we could find a way to make that connection to build the trust, I think that would go a long way. So to me, I got, when we were talking about cultural liaison, it was not just for blacks.
Yeah, and that was my, probably my error on that because I thought, as we were talking about it earlier, it was something particular for ESU.
I think we had discussed both, so I, I guess in my mind, I was just throwing it back.
What I'd be interested in is the liaisons for the Hispanic and Native American. How are they drafted? What are their time commitments? What's the compensation? Who pays them? I guess I think that's different than what we all, we all probably go around the room, we probably won't come up with all the same answers.
So I think that the job description or expectations has the elements.
So.
Be more consistent.
Right, and one of the key pieces there is that the, the Native American liaisons, those are the compensation. They're, they are Prairie Island employees. They're not revenue employees, they're obviously working on their duties. Is there, is there something to do with, on the Prairie Island side, is that, is some of that state funded too? Or is it state law that we have to have that through the? So there is some state funding that does go to Prairie Island for their compensation, but still a majority of it is coming from, from Prairie Island. And then, I think we've discussed before, the Hispanic, that's from some local. We don't have any district funds that are utilized for a, anybody Hispanic liaison.
So the, Jamie, I don't know who, who has replaced her, but who pays for that?
Carla, Carla.
Conca.
I'm trying to think what her.
Carla Conca?
Yeah, I know who she is, I was trying to think of.
She gets paid to G C E.
Yeah, let's, trying to think. Right, I know she is G C E.
But don't we get some dedicated funds to, aren't there like federal requirements?
We do for Native students, not for any other than that.
Yes, so for our Native American liaisons, which have been in districts since the early nineties, they're, as Superintendent Josh said, they are employees of Prairie Island. And then some of our federal American Indian funds and our state American Indian funds go slightly towards that, to the liaison, so they're able to serve all American Indian students in the district and not just members of Prairie Island. But that comes from very specific federal funds and state American Indian funds.
This is a bigger discussion for another day, I think, a lot of questions.
Well, it does, it, um, doesn't feel fair that we're doing this because this group of people generates income when we have students that have needs that could be supported by having a liaison in school. And I think if you look at, there was just popped up in my newsfeed, an article about Rochester Public Schools. They have an answer name column. And they were wondering about their liaisons and their, their cultural liaisons. And what they said, that they have in their, their district, obviously, is much bigger than ours. So they have seventeen point two FTE and they earn in salaries and benefits a total of a million something. I won't bore you with those numbers, but it's thirty-six percent of the total budget.
Thirty-six, can't be.
Or point three six, sorry, yeah. Point three six. Maybe I should just flat out read this exactly. But one-third of one percent of the budget. And so what do they get in their district for that spending? They get, it talks about cultivating a just and inclusive education environment regardless of where every student, or for every student, regardless of background or circumstance can excel and flourish through deeper learning. They are, they break down, they're talking about breaking down systemic barriers and promoting equitable, equitable access to resources. In a 2023 story, they had seventeen hundred kids who received English language services. And among them, more than one hundred non-English languages were represented in their homes. And I know that we're smaller than that. But the point is that if you took one of us and put us in a science class in Kuala Lumpur where you speak Malaysian, it would impact your grades. Just like students whose first language is home, at home is not English, that impacts their grades. Race and economic status, white students typically out in running are outperforming Black and Hispanic students on tests and graduation rates. And a lot of that has to do with higher rates of poverty. I think it's important, in this article, they talk about helping these students graduate. And I know that our Native American liaisons are helping our indigenous kids be successful and graduate from high school and, and go on to some type of secondary education. And our job as a district and our job as a board is to ensure that all students succeed. And I think that this is an investment that we can't afford not to make. So I know maybe a broader discussion.
It is, I think we have a lot of questions, I think, as a board. I probably misstated my, misunderstood exactly where we were going initially. Now I rephrase the question all the way to the point.
That's okay, I appreciate the discussion about ESU too. I think that if we look into comparison, parity, if it gives you a sense of the Indian.
So we have, Mr. Harman's working on some, see if I asked him to find some numbers, find me others. Compare some kind of, see if there's some kind of hazard, like place like that, kind of odd. Feel like, yeah, they, uh, two shows again actually, so we use it again. Yeah, okay, continue the conversation, all right.
Couldn't we put it up in the next workshop or something like that?
Yep, yeah.
For the cultural liaison.
So we're talking to people now, because I hear cultural liaison and now a BSU student.
Essentially, well, right now, that's yet to be determined. So there's, again, talk a little bit about ESU advisor and then the cultural liaison. Okay, Ms. Pagel?
Yes.
We have some questions for you regarding the online supplemental classes. Yeah, button center again.
Yes. Cam Hamble's on right now. I don't know what the questions are.
So at this stage.
Thanks for your time.
At this stage, the online supplemental classes, so what those are is if a student is taking one, two, or three classes
Yes.
that are online classes, those primarily this year are being taken in-house. The classes that are offered there, they're through a platform called Enginuity. And at this point, do we have any limitations on what those online supplemental classes are?
Yes, I mean, the limitations are, do we have people that can teach them, right? And know, have the ability to be able to do it? Because we don't want to have them take a course that no one is going to be able to really know if it's correct or not, right? I mean, most of the courses are self-corrected, because that's just how it's, it's set up. But there are some things that you do have to go in and read and there's rubrics that they give you in score as a teacher, so.
So at this point, do we have a defined list of classes that are available to our students in online passion?
No. At this point, I go through the course options with them and say, I can do this one, I can do this one, I can do this one. No, you don't get that one, so they don't. And honestly, it, it's, that's just because that's the way it ended up this year. And it may change depending on how our registration goes, who our teachers are and what they're qualified to teach. So every year it could change.
So have you had any difficulties with students being able to access a class you would have liked to take?
No.
How many kids are doing online?
Um, so I pulled that up. Some of them are still here, some of them are, some of the kids that I have in my list, I can't get them out of this part. I have a hundred and sixty kids that I have enrolled this year. Some of them have left and not done it second semester, they only did it first semester. Some of them, I think I have like a handful that have left and gone full-time online. But so I think overall, I've probably got a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and fifty kids that have taken at least one class with us this year that has stayed in-house.
So that curriculum is through Enginuity? So does somebody like Emily go through that to look to make sure that curriculum meets what our curriculum is?
So for, for like core classes, there's Minnesota core classes and they're that meet our state standards. Some of the electives are different because electives don't always have the same rigor of standards or they're just, you know, they're. Yeah, the formalized, thank you. Yeah, so. So, thank you, Emily. Do you need to join me? So, yeah.
All the Western offerings.
Yeah, yeah, so Enginuity has like specific catalogs by state.
By state.
To match the standards, so.
So do you find like one subject that kids are deviating from in-person classes to do online? Because we all know that there are some.
So.
You know where I'm going with this.
I, I know where you're going with it, and I will say what I expected to have happened did not happen. Like last year, last spring, I can say like, we had just a mass exodus out of juniors and seniors from our econ, geography, and government classes. Those classes are pretty full this semester. I mean, I can tell you my geography class all year, they've been full. We've lost, I'm sorry, we have not lost as many students this year as we did before. It also goes by like, I can tell you my juniors this year, last year they were the group that left biology. This year they're the group that's leaving some of the algebra two, right? And some of, and so it's just like, and some of it goes with the group of kids that it's with. Some of them did it and then came back and said, that was way harder than I anticipated it to be, I need to go back in the classroom, right? I've had, and I, one of the standards that we set is that if you did not do well first semester, you're in the classroom second semester, right? I'm not going to put you in a class for a second semester of online learning that you've shown that you are not successful in, right? I mean, so it's, it's not like, it's not a freebie, right? You have to, you have to show that you can do it, you have to be able to put the time in, you have to be able to earn the grades that, I mean, I can see all the grades, I know what they're capable of doing, right? So if they're earning a D when in the past years they've gotten Bs, I'd be like, no, I think we need to reverse this. And there's so, there's a conversation that I've had with every kid that I've enrolled into an online class. There is a limit on three because once you go above that, then it's considered a full-time schedule based on how many periods you are in your day, and we are not an approved online high school. Supplemental has different, you don't need to go through the M D E approval process to be an online high school if you're only supplemental.
So if somebody, a student wished to take four or more, then their option is to enroll in five R O.
Or other, other, other online, any online school, yep. Because I do have, they're like, well, I want to go online, where do I go? And I said, well, that's up to you, but I can just give them a list of different schools if they want, right? Because different schools are set up different ways. And we've had, we've had students take classes from Blue Sky Online, from Five R O, Minnesota Connections, Minnesota K-12. We've had them from all over the place. And so I don't just say go over there, right? I want to give the parent and the student the options to make sure the right school is for them, so.
Can you talk a little bit about the process to determine whether or not a student can take an online class?
We, we have, so in, in the, if it, if the class fits into their schedule, right? If there's no restrictions, then they should be in-person, okay? Because one of the things that we didn't want to do was to have just, we are not an open campus school. But it's sometimes hard to police that as well. And so when they have on. And so when they have onlines, right, if they have one or two onlines, I try to get them grouped together at the beginning of the day, the end of the day, or one at each end, right? Because we don't, what we don't want is people to be coming and going from our building all day long. And as I, you know, talk to the students about that, too, it's like, it's, it's a security reason, right? We need to know where you're at, because if they leave after fifth period, right, we tell them they need to go through the main office and sign out. That doesn't always mean that that's what they do, okay? And so if it fits into their schedule, yes, that's where they need to be. Now, this year, right, and it's a learning curve for me, too, we have some students that have internships or other classes that they're doing where the actual course fits into their schedule, but because of the time constraints around it, for example, I have a student that asked to take government online because they're doing an internship in the morning at veterinary clinics. And the vet said to them, well, if we're in with a patient, you can't really leave in the middle of something, right? You don't get, right? So, I mean, there's those responsibilities, too, which then could potentially have that student being late to class, missing content, things like that. And so those individual conversations happen as well, so for that particular student, yes, they are now online. Because I don't want to be, I don't want to be the barrier for them to not be able to get the information and the content they need for, you know, graduating. And same kind of conversation we had, you know? But so those are the kind of conversations that have to go with every, every class, especially when they get to be the older grades where P S E O is in play, internships are in play, other things. Sometimes O J T, I have a student that works at a daycare who, they close at 5:30, so her O J T starts earlier, she wants to get there earlier, so we did an online class, fifth period, so they could get more time in it. So, you know, there's a lot of different things. And what I've really tried to do is try to be as flexible as I can for our students, because really, I want them here, and I want them to stay here, and I want to do what we can to allow that to happen. I mean, education is very different than when I started a few years ago. And we need to be more flexible, and we have to figure out how to work with the needs of our students and the responsibilities that they have to themselves, to their families, and other, other people, too. So, and so we can't just be the nine-to-five, or eight-to-whatever we are institutional school.
And how is that working with staffing for those online courses?
So, right now, staffing, that's a conversation we have to have as we go forward. So this year, I have Nikki Larson, who does a lot of them. Mandy Stokes and I got O F Ps, so we could do some of them. And I have a science teacher who's also a math teacher this semester, doing math and science.
When you say, so, I just, I have an eighth grader, so I know that they lost an eighth grade section of science because their science teacher was shipped it over to cover this online.
There was 10 people in that course, in that period, that was it. And we can't, financially looking at it, if I only have 10 students in a class, because that's all that fit based on the other classes they had, that's not a financially responsible section to have either.
I know what you're trying to say.
There was only 10 students, so there was-
Only 10 kids in that.
In science.
In that science class, that period, that's why it got transferred. Because I looked at that and went, well, that's not really a good use either. And having a class of only 10 kids is actually quite difficult, you know, to-
I wonder, does the online class though have 10 kids, that you, you know, or-
Well, see, when you're online, it's not during that period. That's her period to go in and check grades, check progress, enter grades into synergy, right, into parent view for, for those kids. That's not her, she connects with them through emails, they, she says, this is when I'm available, right? So they connect through that time. She's not actually teaching them anything. It's all in the system. So there's no direct teaching by her, it's them-
They have questions, they certainly do.
Right. Yes, yeah.
So you still need a teacher, even though they have a teacher online?
Yes. We have to have a licensed teacher that covers it.
Yes.
So that's why, in some cases, we have some teachers who are in an old field commission to be able to meet that requirement. So is there a concern with us operating, I don't want to say this politely, but too many options, so-
Yes.
Or could we allow these students to not need a science class?
Well, so, there's still five sections of science. Science this year, so we, with all the cuts we had to make last year, all of our core classes went down to five sections. Science still had six. So I didn't actually take anything per se away from them that they didn't have, that didn't meet all the other classes. I didn't have five sections going to four, right? There was six sections I went to five.
So one of the discussions that Pagel and I have had is, is we need to narrow our, narrow our offerings-
Yep.
-in order to better slot everybody.
Right, right.
One for meeting our core curriculum?
Yeah.
Yep, that's our key topic.
Yeah, and, and, and we are. I mean, her classes are not, I mean, all of our classes, because we went to five sections, are a little higher, right, in numbers, but they're not over our max. All of her classes are, except for one, are still under her, under her, are at the limit or under.
What is that next?
This year, we, uh, we had to go to 35. That's where we went with, with the cuts.
So we offer a in-class option, and we also offer online options as well?
So, okay, let me give you an example. The answer broadly, yes. But, so, for example, I had a student last year that I caught at the end of ninth grade who didn't enroll in ninth grade science, who enrolled in 10th grade science, and when I had the conversation with him, he said, because my brother said biology's better than the one I was supposed to take, and I didn't, so I didn't take that one. And I was like, don't listen to your brother for your educational plan, right? But so, he this year, instead of wanting, instead of as a sophomore going into a ninth grade science class, he took that class online, right? So he still met the requirements. Do I have ninth graders or 10th grader, you know, if it's not fitting, it goes, if, if it fits, it goes in their schedule. If it doesn't fit, or there's some conflict because they have to have, for whatever reason, then yes, then they would go online.
So do you take any though conflict, like if they don't like the teacher, or if they think the work is easier online, do you take?
Um-
That's why those conversations-
That's why those conversations happen. And, you know, we, we all have to learn how to get along with people we don't always care for.
No, that's why I'm asking.
So, yeah.
There's criteria.
Yes.
But nothing stopping them from going to five R O if they want to.
Correct, correct. Yep. Yeah, I, we can't, we cannot stop them from going. They can always choose to do that, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, if there, or if there's something that they want to take-
That someone else offers.
Then we can take that.
Then they can go, yeah, yeah.
How does this affect our funding, state funding? If they go to five R O, they're, how does a student, if they're, if they're wanting three classes through you, it's-
We keep all the funding.
Keep all the funding, that's, that's it. So five R O, they couldn't do these one, three classes through five R O.
They can't.
I believe they can.
So last, last year, I can tell you, so like I said, I have 160 students that I had enrolled this year. Last spring semester, we had 195 high school students going supplemental over there this year. One, two, or three classes over there. They had 395-
195 from our-
From our building, this building, yes. This year, this semester, did we count eight the other day, Bob?
Eight full-time.
Eight full-time. So, but we'd have very, very few supplemental or one, two, three class students over there this year.
We still do have, I think, the last time I checked, there's 130 of that students who are full-time five R O.
Five R O, mm-hmm.
Are they still getting a diploma from us?
Yes, that's written right into the joint covenant agreement, I looked at it a little earlier, so yes, they are.
That was added?
No, that was, I looked back in the original documentation, that's, that we had all these-
Five R O didn't come until after that happened, though, that's my question.
I'm just saying, when I looked on wherever it was.
I just know we questioned it.
Definitely questioned.
Because nobody's overseeing that curriculum, so like, for Redwin, to give them a Redwin diploma, Redwin is overseeing that curriculum, meaning our graduation.
Right.
Initially, that was something that gave me pause, you know, that was something that I felt a bit concerned about. Over the course of time, I guess that those concerns have been alleviated, I guess, to a certain degree. But right now, the way the documentation, what I saw, it's that they would receive a whole program. I'll be sleeping for five R O. Full-time right now, I think there's 100.
That's K-12, right?
K-12.
K-12.
Of our students?
Yeah.
And we do get some money.
Well, that was that document, we're going to give it back in August.
Yeah, we don't lose all of our state funding if kids go to five R O. So if they're going to go online-
Our purpose would be that they would-
Would be five, they should go to five R O because the costing of it is, there are students that enroll from other districts. So this, the per pupil funding they get from those districts comes off the cost of running that, that program. And then that number is divided amongst, it's kind of like we get a discount for our students if they're part of G C D. So that's better than losing them altogether. We don't, it's not a complete loss for us, I'm answering.
So then on a somewhat related piece, course catalog, so where is, I guess, the high school primary one tier, where are we sending the course catalog to the upcoming school?
So we are looking at it, right now, it was sent out last week to all the teachers to look at it, refine anything that they want to refine. We know we need to make some edits. For example, and help me out, Emily, if I misspeak here, all of our concurrent courses that we have through Southeast Tech or elsewhere need to be labeled as what the college has them listed as. So right now, we have A P Lang, Lang and Comp, which is our junior class, but that's what it's listed as in our course catalog. Both semesters of that A P course are also concurrent through Southeast Tech, okay? They list it as College Writing One and College Writing Two.
And then Lang is-
That's culture.
Oh, Lit is Intro to Literature and Multicultural Literature.
Yep, and so-
So we, I did some research of how would you keep both A P and current enrollment, we didn't want to lose that. So A P allows you to use a local name of a course, as long as you put in brackets as A P, but it's going to have to be listed in our course catalog separately, okay?
Right.
So it'll be like, Intro to Literature, A P Lit, you have to do the whole name, multicultural, A P Lit, if you wanted. As an A P course, you must sign up for both, because that's still six credits, that's three credits for concurrent enrollment. So there's some changes with that, and we're adding a concurrent enrollment as well in E L A. But the course catalog will be presented at February 24.
Yep. There will be-
How many concurrent courses do we have?
Right now, we offered 19, I counted last year. We had 19 that we offered. The ones that we're losing, we're taking some out, like that were P L T W courses through the U, which means Project Lead the Way.
And we lost one because of some new accreditation rules that go back from September 1st for concurrent classes, so we are losing one concurrent class next year just because we can't offer it anymore.
Don't have a licensed teacher for it.
We were able to keep everything else with the accreditation, which is great, because our teachers had to do a lot, they knew that was coming, and they-
Had to do a lot of-
Went back to school and had to do lots of things to keep that accreditation for the universities, so. Do we have a path for teachers to be able to teach concurrent? Because I think there was a huge upset, you know, very demenage leaving and the whole Spanish four or five stuff people are so upset by. Is there a path for our Spanish teacher, other teachers to-
So for Spanish in particular, and German, they have to go through the courses that the U of M specifies. And so if, if that's what she wants to do, that's what she'll have to do, right? She has to reach out and make all those arrangements, just like with all of our other concurrent teachers. When we knew the last few years this was coming, that you have until this date, right? We put, not we, one of our teachers put out, this is how we do it, this is what you need to do, here are the steps to do it, so that it was always out there, because they were the ones getting that information.
Now you either have to have a master's in the very specific area you're teaching, or 18 credits above your current master's in that area for your concurrent enrollment. So that's the new rule going into fact on September 1st.
So we added in concurrent this year through Southeast Tech Survey of Chemistry, right? Mr. Chalmers retired last year, he didn't have that. We had a bunch of kids that always flocked over there to take that class. Dr. Sorman does have that, so we've made that one concurrent this year, and our chemistry numbers have gone way up here in the building, so.
Is there incentive, though, for like a teacher to go?
Um, it would be on your pay scale and how many credits you earn in step in lane and step, yeah, step in lane, so.
I just wondered the benefit versus the, you know, loss of keeping, I'm just using Spanish, I begin as an example, keeping that in-house versus people enrolling for P S E O for that, what the loss is versus, you know, like, you know, like-
I do, I do.
That I think P S E O costs a lot of money, we lose that money.
So it does, but over, I mean, in, I don't know where it was going, but the numbers in those classes were very steadily declining as well, so.
So like a P S E O, you know, we have less than half a dozen kids who are in P S E O, is that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Certainly, there's some that are taking-
One to three classes, yeah, yep.
Anything else for Ms. Pagel?
Will we get, will that course catalog be attached in March, April?
Yeah, when it comes in the 24th, yep. For all the edits, updates, all of those things. Yeah, course change, name changes, things like that, that we have to meet the new guidelines on, so. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item there, the Jefferson Building, there's a meeting tomorrow at Bus Off, I think, on Jefferson Building, with the city, so we'll have a little more information on that. My anticipation is, is that we would have an R F P put together based upon the, you know, we have from the city. Part of the deal, when we talked about this in the past, is within that community, from the Jefferson community, there's been a, one of, I guess, part of the difficulty is, is when the district has sold this parcel in the past, the last couple times, I should say, there was a, had an outcry from the community members, be able to retain some of the green space that's there, in particular, part of the playground. So part of the discussion with the city, is the city looking to assume any additional property at any point, and then we could put together an R F P and go from there. There was, I sent something out here last week, that I had somebody who was inquiring about it, so I did take them through the building, just so they could see what was going on, if anybody has any desire to, if they, somebody has proposed use or something on that, I'd certainly be happy to take them through that, that, you know, your local schedules. We, we know, does anyone know, was it sold twice before, and then was backed out? We don't want the dollar counts, or any of that, or, you mean rough, just? Yes. Four oh five and three hundred.
And do we typically, do we go through like a realtor, or do we put that for sale or something?
Uh, passive, and then by ourselves. Well, I guess I don't know, but Kyle knows some people. Kyle, Clatt, from the city, he has some connections there. Oh, yeah, those guys, so. Is this meeting tomorrow, is it all within the school board members, or is it? So there's, no, so Jim and Jeff are on that committee. Yeah, there's, anybody's walking the top, and they just won't be able to participate.
Also, though, if it's going to be four, well, then it has to be noticed, and it's-
Well, you don't know before it's coming. It's an open meeting.
Right, no, but I'm saying, let's talk about this now, so if Reagan's going to go, nobody else should go, because then we'll be-
We don't want to establish-
Right.
So, I'm, I'm meeting this tomorrow, I wish that's not official. So I'm having a meeting this tomorrow, I wish that's not official.
Hope they have more information.
That's the goal.
Can we put that on our next agenda, board agenda?
Put it on the board.
I'll, I'll, I'll page on it.
Or add it to the superintendent's
An action item to do something with it.
Well, let's see what comes out of the meeting first. That's like if the cart is front of the horse here.
I know, but it just keeps getting kicked in the head.
We have our agenda outlined, same, and so we'll, we'll know when. We don't know what the, we don't know the decision to propose. If they say, oh, we still need to talk about it on the 23rd when we have a meeting with the councilors, what are we gonna say? Let's work with them the proper way and then bring something forward.
Right.
But the way this point, we don't want to just keep, next thing you know it's gonna be July.
No, we don't want
Status update at least.
Yeah, I understand, just say they're gonna come and want to buy it.
An update, an update will be by the committee, but the action item may not be ready by then.
Okay, and then the strategic plan and mission statement. I don't know where you would like to begin with that, what you'd like to, but we've got an awful lot going on. I think we, we talked about viewing, looking over the mission statement every so often. It's been this since I've been on here, this is my seventh year. It doesn't hurt to, you know, staff to look at to come up with a mission statement. My, my recollection of mission statements are not very, not three, four, five long, it's, it's kind of to the point and done. And as strategic planning, I'll leave that up to you. Well, strategic planning, it's all gonna, so like some of the things that could go into strategic planning is you know, are, are there any programs that we would like to be examining and like the things that we have, the things that we subtract? So one of the things that I've been at least kind of dreaming about is, is there a possibility that we can expand our preschool and end up with a more universal P4 program? That's a massive undertaking, lots of planning, and there's an investment that will be required of that. So right now, what I'm doing is kind of taking, taking some baby steps to try to put a little bit of that together and then obviously the board needs to involve that like before. At this point, the good news is, is that I'm not spending any money on it. It's just kind of internal work.
Yeah, I guess, what else would they want to do for the strategic plans, like what's, it's like one-year goal, two-year goal, five-year goals for things to accomplish for the school.
We had a five-year strategic plan that's how you're last year, I believe. And so that's kind of really coming from two weeks that were passed over, so you know, what are we looking for?
We've got a lot of major problems. So that's a, that's a more involved process and everybody has to involve. I, I look at the fourth bullet point, connection partners with our community. Sounds very good, what's that mean? What does that mean? I'm thinking flight paths. To partner with businesses to get our kids an educational experience of neighborhood businesses, or I'm, I'm very worried on that. I'm just saying that says something, but it doesn't, doesn't mean anything to me. You know, what does it mean? Like flight paths or something. I'm just throwing that out there for you to, to look at.
So I'm gonna talk with Ann Robertson a little bit, sort of hold that up, I wanted to get kind of a history of the strategic plan because you kind of didn't know where you were, where you were going.
Did they ever ask for input from the community or stakeholders or do you?
Yeah, definitely a part of the, we might have some strategic plan. Might have some information that, that might be available through the superintendent. When we did the interviews back when, before you we did surveys and community meetings, there might be some information there that could create into that now to a point. Instead of reading, how many surveys do you do? Look at the information you already asked to see if it's, it's, you know, one, one thing that is a kind of elephant in the room is the loss of the Has anyone actually sat down with families that have chosen to leave out there? There's, there's a lot of rumors, there's a lot of hypotheticals, why? Has anyone sat down with good families who have chosen to go elsewhere and asked them? When given the opportunity, but I guess as far as when somebody has made a choice to run elsewhere, do we specifically seek them out and ask the why? And I guess that probably isn't happening.
And I guess I didn't, I didn't mean it like that. I meant more as a learning, kind of a fact finding mission to see why, see why they're not, 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 not every deal, if we, if we hear, hey, so-and-so left, go, go talk to them, but is it, I mean, I'm just curious of, of if there's differences or if those things need to be driven down or you know, have some anonymous conversations about, or anonymous people, we give, give us some reasoning so we can work on something. That kind of ties back into community, like what Jim was saying, with community outreach and finding things out.
It is a question on the open enrollment form, families choose to blow it out. Because like two years ago, Mick and I sat and read through all of them to find a pattern. There actually wasn't one. We read through all of them for a year.
Like how many was it?
I don't remember.
That actually completed it, you know?
Oh, that entered the question quite a few.
Yeah.
It was, it was a couple of years ago that Mick and I sat down and did that one day because we were just curious, but it is a question on the open enrollment form.
But if you had a presentation before that gave us that But that was done by the company that was all foil, right? The building facility study, waiting to give us accurate data. Remember they said like fourteen kids went to it and we were like, what? But that is something that I've asked for, like for, or since I've been on the board, is to do an enrollment study because you can pay to have that done, like in a legit way, and they actually recommend it before you go out there randomly to understand what the community
What?
What the
I have no idea. But honestly, it's like if the community is willing to usually, I mean, like when I was running the last two times, people are very willing to tell you if you just ask.
And really the US board members are perfect to be able to, you know, help. I go to the community and very, it happens way too many times, somebody brings up something negative that they heard from somebody else who told that other person, who told that person, who told that person, it isn't even accurate. It's that false negative image that people paint, because negativity is so much easier to spread than positivity. And we as board members and community members, this is a positive thing. I'm gonna speak at the next board meeting I'm at called Birdside School. I served lunch there. We hear somebody coming here all the time talking about how bad Birdside School is. Wrong. I had the kids, we're the best kids, pleases and thank yous, the staff was outstanding. I don't care what gender you are, what race you are, that all were polite. It was like I didn't want to leave. Right? That one, what was that young boy's name? First name? The one sitting at the table with us?
Yeah, I'm not gonna say.
You can't say.
He was just, he was just interested. He could've said Bob, he could've said Bob, how's that?
Yeah, we're not a mom.
But, but I'm pointing, my point is
Yes, sir is.
We have to do a better job. One way to handle, I'm not saying it's the only way. One way to have to have is promote ourselves. We can kick people down all we want, people can kick everybody down they want. End of the day is we have some tremendous students, some tremendous staff, and we do have stuff going on, get me wrong. Because of the birds, uh, high school. Like jails and prisons and factories, they don't all play well together. But there's issues, but there's not all the stuff here. Somebody said, all this is going on there, there's this going on. No, it's not. I've been in the bird side, I've been in bird side, I've been in the high school, I've been in the middle school, I've been in Caldwell, Sunnyside. I, I don't see that stuff. And I tell people that, but we have to do a better job as a district, not just a board, of the district promoting ourselves better. The positivity that we need to do, if we want to start looking at some of the enrollment stuff, that's part of the big puzzle. But you're right, we ask people. But I'm gonna keep coming to tell you, when you're campaigning, there's fights at high school all the time. I hope there's not.
But you could have your three-year plan to improve your community education and then break it down to more attainable goals for like next six months, the next year, and you have objectives to provide it to the community that needs it. And those examples, you know.
Back to that, yes, true. So what was our last, so where are we at with the strategic plan? We have, it was, it was a five-year
It's something that, I mean, it's been on, been on the books for the last five years and a lot of, a lot of this is kind of the primary discussion model.
I'll, I think it would be beneficial to put a, you know, put a goal, date that they have, they have more of it, so it's that's feasible or that
Should be, should be.
Right. Are we the people that wrote the strategic plan?
No, you've got to prove it.
We've proved it.
We don't develop it.
Right, well, I'm just checking.
But your input is certainly
Right.
Part of the equation.
Right, well, yes, but I'm just wondering where is the, the leadership or the point of responsibility for?
How old?
Who's in charge of that? That's what I want to know.
Let's go to our first meeting in June. That gives four months. Give them time to work on other things. We were throwing up, this is a big meeting tonight. A lot of stuff going on. I hate to say it, you need it done in sixteen days.
Well, and I want
Four months would certainly, I think it'd be ample time to, since we need to start a new school year or a new strategic plan.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, well, and I was quite surprised, just from me knowing other board members within the Goodye County Ed District. Declining enrollment is a problem for everyone. Having your students leave to go to other districts, it's not just kids from Redling that are going to, let's say, Goodye for example, there's also kids from Goodye coming to Redling. And Kenyon wanted them to go going to some, to Zepa, and people going to Cannon Falls, Lake City kids going down to High Island. Like, everybody has students that are leaving because we have open enrollment and it's become very easy to leave. And I would love to see us as Redling, and I think, as Bob pointed out when he came for his interview, we have so many assets here in this community. And I think that we could be a destination school district because we have things, the community partnerships, and we have a thriving arts community. And those things spill over into our school. And if we look at our clubs, if we invest in a, please keep beating the drum, but the cultural liaison for our black students, that's going to bring people in. And those are all things that we can think about.
Yeah, that's the same thing. We have not to have a pattern of consistency and not stubborn talk.
Right.
So we gotta do that too.
I agree with everything you said, but statistically, I mean, we're losing a million dollars worth of kids in funding. And that's very important. And I don't know how else to, I agree with being positive and promoting and all the good things that we have, but I think we have to do something more. And I don't know what that is, and that's why I keep pushing like a, an enrollment study because somebody needs to help us figure that out. There's wait lists for the Goodye West even for next year. There's wait lists for getting to St. John's for next year. Like this is gonna continue. And I just why are people going? I think we need to understand that and that's you can't fix a problem until you know the problem. You need to understand that we have something that's not just
It's not.
Happening everywhere across the country. Oh, we are here in Redling. Absolutely, and we need to do everything we can to figure it out. I completely agree with you. I agree with all of this. This is a fantastic conversation. But you need to be realistic as well.
I'll, I'll, I'm not to disagree with a couple of things said here. I would say ninety percent of the school districts are facing declining enrollment for various reasons. First rate, online charter schools, other school educational opportunities weren't there when we went to school. When I went to school, I went to one school, I had a choice. You know, go to St. Joe's, St. John's.
I, I agree, we can get the data, but what we can't correct actually.
I think there was something done before even last year. I feel like Dawn and Amy, they have something that they have looked into. And it came down to that people were moving out of Redling. That was one of the main reasons, I believe. I hope I understood correctly. But that might be something that we could look into to see what
Well, okay, so the state, the other place that we can find some information to, it's just going to be state and October. So you can see where demographics are in like, in the city, statewide, nationally, birthday, fall, and you can see this kind of across the state.
If, if we can't deny there are people leaving and wanting to, like nearby, and that would be fantastic to keep that.
Yeah, I think right in the age of community, I don't think that's any, there's no secret with that, but it's, it's been I lived here most of my life, but it gives between thirteen and sixty thousand the entire time I've been. But I definitely know that our class sizes are decreasing, but we were, I think I graduated two years.
Three twenty-five, a couple of years ago.
Three fifty.
How many?
Three fifty, we're living in
Three twenty-five, we're three twenty-five. A lot of horses and bookies died after the real.
So, alright. Other than, I will say one other thing too, I did, I, yeah, they're both in the Watanango school. They're both in elementary, but yes, right, they're back there in Watanango Elementary School.
Yes, and everything, that means that in that school district, everything is going to be in Kenyon. There will be nothing in Watanango. So if you are a parent in that district and you live in Watanango, your kids are all going to Kenyon.
I don't think so.
And that, well
It's closer to Sembroda.
Well, right, so there, and that's where I think
There's all kinds of factors.
There are all kinds of factors, and for some smaller school districts, survival, if they want to keep their local little school district, then they need to get people from other districts to open their mouth. Yeah. That's how they survive.
From what ourselves.
Can't, right, from what, because we, yeah. And that goes back to kind of what, you know, there's what really happens? And then there's the word on the street, in this case, Facebook, about what's happening. And where's the truth? And that's where we need to get out and talk about the programs that we have and what kids are doing and yeah. Opportunities, because there are great opportunities and we need to promote those more.
There are actually like zero fights, I guess.
Yeah.
A little louder, please.
We're not gonna say that again.
Say it again, zero fights.
None, zero fights.
And
All these people that naysayers and negative people out there.
Or often people don't realize with all the concurrent enrollment, you can graduate right out of high school a year, so it's your degree basically, or your two-year degree immediately.
With the college prom.
With the college prom, besides, right? And that's a huge, huge advantage.
Other topics. I was in it.
I brought up something in December that I neglected to bring up at our last meeting, we talked about workshop, and it probably falls into our, it would be a bad time to discuss it. Probably fall in line with our transportation contract. It's not gonna be a popular subject by some, but it might be by others. It's a four-day school day. Another one for more of yourselves. Can you e-
Can we add year-round school to that, to that conversation?
What?
We need to add year-round school to that conversation, you know?
I, I'm bringing, I'm bringing that up. You can bring that up, not me.
Alright, I'll bring that up.
That's your problem.
Year-round school.
I think that we need to have
That's not a wild idea, because year-round school doesn't mean going to school three
Let me finish, please. Four-day school, pros and cons, I said that. The other thing is, we took it, we kind of designed what the budget is. We should look at, we have a lot of buildings, we use a lot of electricity, we had new lights put in the high school here. We haven't got a, not that we need, just the information just the information to know, are we saving money, electrical costs, I go buy buildings, and I'm, I even burn side because I have to drive by there, and it's nobody's fault, it's, whether it's eight o'clock at night, or, I went by there the other day, I don't know, it's late, like, we need all these lights, and every other one we shut off, I'm just throwing it out there. How are we doing with our electrical costs, are we, they're going up, you know, they keep knocking off pumps into the reactors, we're gonna keep going up more, like, Jeremy? So I'm just, two things for a workshop down the road, we can do these in April, I don't care. Only, I don't want them on the next workshop, I want like them more in April digest, because it's gonna stir up some people.
Do you know where at, where we're at?
Yeah.
Well, are we promising district?
Yeah.
Oh, the lights?
Yeah.
They were all done, not last summer, but the summer before.
Right, not in every building?
With every building, yeah, but Alan can tell you more about it, but it was done through a grant, and I don't actually, I could be wrong, but I asked him out if there's any non LEDs left. They did all of our buildings that summer, yeah.
Outside ones, or LED too?
That I don't know, but I know interior, because we have construction people here, all the, summer of twenty-three.
We pledged money from our reserve to pay, to down, pay down that bond, too, and we're still paying on the bond that we took out.
I think LEDs are sixty percent maybe higher, more efficient for us, so.
We should have an idea what the previous costs were and the new costs. Well, I'm just saying, can we look at, you know, ten-year or five-year range as to, can we look at, electricity is gonna be a popular thing, it's gonna, the grid's not getting bigger, and usage is going up, so we should look at everything we can do to bring costs down. Something right here is, like, those electricity from Texas, so. Thank you, I'm gonna be done talking, I'm gonna, I'm gonna raise my hand.
Well, we have done things, though, I think, I mean, here, I think those, those LED lights are saving us money. We also have at, I don't know about Burnside and Sunnyside, but here at the high school, there are sensors, so if you're not moving in your room, yeah, I'll have them, yeah, lights turn off.
I'm not faulting anybody, I just think-
I can tell you.
Usage is going up.
Black women turned up middle school during pre-studying, it was dark if those lights turned on, so, it's funny though.
Motion to adjourn? Okay. Do I have motion to adjourn?
I am up, so move.
Motion by Mr. Bryant, seconded by Derek Hennig, all in favor of adjourned?
Alright.
Alright.
I'm a vote.
You said you're lucky to be in a-
Go to the right.
Yeah.